Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 6:00 PM on Wednesday, April 29th, 2015. This public hearing is now considered to be open and will come to order. My name is Brett Lovin and I am Chair of the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency Board. I have been appointed to be the Hearing Officer for this public hearing by the Air Quality Board. My purpose this evening is to receive in an orderly manner your comments, either written or oral, for consideration on renewal of the air quality permit for the Duke Energy Progress Incorporated Asheville Steam Electric Plant in Arden, North Carolina. The focus of this hearing and only the focus is the proposed permit and applicability of the air quality regulations. Before we start receiving your comments, I would like to take the time to recognize any local dignitaries such as town mayors, city or county officials, or state elected legislators. If you would, please stand up and introduce yourselves to the audience. There are also members of the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency that are present today. I would like to introduce David Burton, Director of the Agency; Ashley Featherstone, Permitting Program Manager; Kevin Lance, Enforcement and Monitoring Supervisor; Betsy Brown, Air Quality Supervisor; James Rafer, Senior Air Quality Specialist; Mike Matthews, Senior Air Quality Specialist; Marty Scannell, Accounting Technician; Roger Presley, Environmental Control Officer. In addition, I'd like to recognize the board members that are present. Carl Coon; Vonna Klanger; Dr. Dean Call. On a special note, I'd like to also say, our other board member, Lloyd Kirk, is out to not be here tonight due to medical reasons. The third day public comment was published on March 26th, 2015, in the Asheville Tribune and Wechville Tribune, and has also been advertised on the Agency's website. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide interested citizens the opportunity to comment on the proposed renewal of the Title V permit. The Director of the Air Quality Agency has determined that there is sufficient public interest and that a hearing be held to receive pertinent public comments on whether to issue or deny issuance of renewal of the permit for this facility as proposed. Compliments of the permit application and other supporting information submitted by Duke Energy Progress Incorporated, the air permit review, and a draft air permit have been available at the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency, which is located at 49 Mount Paul Road in Asheville. If you haven't done so, I wish to review these materials. They are available to you at that location. The draft permit is also available on the website in a link from the public notice and public hearing announcements. This evening, both oral and written comments may be presented. It is strong urge that all comments be directed towards air quality and air emissions issues. Following receipt and review of all relevant comments, a final recommendation will be made to the Air Quality Board. So that everyone understands proceedings, the order of events for this meeting for this evening will be as follows. Ashley Featherstone will discuss the 2010 sulfur dioxide standard. Betsy Brown will discuss the proposed permit and permitting procedure. This will then be followed by the public comment hearing. We will receive comments from those persons who have registered during the sign-up period indicating their desire to present oral comments. For those who may enter without registering, who would like for their attendance to be noted in the record, please register before you leave the seat. Also, you cannot be acknowledged to present comments without being registered. To provide enough time for everyone wishing to present comments, this meeting will be deducted in the following manner. If you have written comments today, please give them to Kevin Lance, who is sitting down front, and they will be included in the hearing record. Those wishing to make oral comments will be allowed to do so. All efforts will be made to keep the presentation in order sequence of your registration. To afford the opportunity to all persons desired to speak, oral statements will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Kevin Lance will be our official timekeeper. He will hold up his sign indicating when each speaker has 30 seconds left, and he will hold up another sound when the speaker's time is up. Please keep to this time schedule. For oral presentations exceeding three minutes, presenters are strongly encouraged to submit written copies of the presentation. These may be left here tonight or emailed to Betsy Brown. Contact information is included in the handouts on the registration table. Cross-examination of the persons presenting comments will not be allowed. However, as the Hearing Officer, I may ask questions for clarification. Questions directed to Agency staff members will not be answered during the hearing. I am respectfully asking you to restrain any urges that you may have to applaud, shout, or offer other verbal support or abuse while others are offering their comments. We should respect each other's time. Everyone who wishes to speak will be given an opportunity to use the right in an orderly fashion. This hearing will be open until 8:45 PM tonight to hear comments. In addition to the comments received this afternoon, the hearing record will remain open until closing business on April 30th, 2015. Written communications can be mailed to Betsy Brown at the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency. Her mailing address is WMCRAQA49MountPaul Road, Asheville, North Carolina, 28806. Business calls are available at the front of the auditorium or they can be emailed to betsy.brown@bunkhamcounty.org. Remember, this hearing is intended as a forum where I can hear your comments relative to air quality issues only, and only relative air quality comments will be considered in the recommendation. Again, the only focus of this hearing is the presentation comments related to proposed permit and applicability of air quality regulations. I would now call Ashley Featherstone from the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality to make some brief regards, comments regarding sulfur dioxide standards.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate your interest in air quality. We too care about clean air and are committed to ensuring that we have healthy air here in Buncombe County. A recent study about sulfur dioxide emissions that the Sierra Club Commission regarding the Duke Energy Progress Plant has been a topic of concern for the community leading up to this permit renewal process, and so we wanted to put together some information for you to share with you here regarding this important issue. This is addressed in the handouts that we have out front, and we wanted to let you know that while the local air agency is delegated the enforcement authority of the federal, state, and local air pollution regulations, and we do have an approved Title V federal air permitting program, we are a regulatory agency and as such, we are required to implement standards consistent with current regulations under the Clean Air Act. We cannot put conditions in permits that are not supported by existing regulations. That is why the sulfur dioxide standard is not being addressed as part of the current permit renewal process. We are, however, currently working with the State Division of Air Quality on a plan to characterize air quality impacts from sulfur dioxide emissions around the Duke Energy Progress Skyline Plant and throughout Buncombe County, and that plant we are working on is required to be submitted to EPA in January. We will continue to work with the State Division of Air Quality and the utility company to determine if our area meets the sulfur dioxide standards. Our area is currently designated as attaining all existing standards, and we wish to work with the state and EPA and other stakeholders to maintain that status. To further explain the process, this is where it does get pretty involved, and we did provide some bulleted items in the handouts. But the Clean Air Act requires the EPA to periodically review and revise, if necessary, the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. That's what EPA did back in 2010 when they issued a new standard, a new one-hour standard for sulfur dioxide. Air Quality Designations were published by EPA. They determined what areas were meeting the standards and what areas were not, for areas where there were sulfur dioxide monitoring sites run by local and state air pollution control agencies that were in place. So basically, they made designations of whether or not the areas were meeting the standards if there were monitors in place, but there were a lot of areas, including ours and others across the nation, where there were not sulfur dioxide air pollution monitors established, and as such, EPA did not make the designations that they were required to make. In response to that, the Sierra Club and the National Resources Defense Council sued the EPA for not meeting their obligations under the Clean Air Act in making those designations. So the EPA proposed a rule in May of 2014 detailing the requirements for states to provide data to EPA so that they can make final SO2 attainment or non-attainment designations. The proposed rule does include an anticipated timeline, a required timeline to their process. That's in the handouts. The final rule is expected out later this year. Meanwhile, the Sierra Club and NRBC signed a consent decree with EPA in March of 2015 that also laid out a similar timeline that's in our handouts as well. So as part of that process, the states are required to submit, whether included or if there are local agencies like ours, these plans to EPA by January. EPA, for this standard, has actually said, instead of using exclusively monitoring data, we can use modeling data. That is similar to the study that Sierra Club did where they had air pollution modeling done to predict concentrations based on weather conditions and meteorology. So EPA has told states that they must submit plans by January saying how they will characterize these areas. If either going to be based on modeling data, similar to the Sierra Club study, or it would be based on monitoring data. And if it's going to be based on monitoring data, the monitors have to be approved and set up in areas where models predict high concentrations can be. And if it's going to be based on modeling data, those models have to be submitted January 2017. So if under this process outlined here, the EPA determines that emissions from the Duke Energy Progress Plant are causing an exceedance of the national standard for sulfur dioxide, our agency will work with the State Division of Air Quality, Duke Energy Progress, to address this problem and take any necessary steps to bring the area into compliance. Enforceable emission limits may be established and incorporated into the permit as the necessary purpose of the process. So thank you again for your interest, and we look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you, Ashley. I now call on Betsy Brown from the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency to present the explanation of the air permit procedure and permit review.
Good evening. Duke Energy Progress Incorporated has applied for the air permit renewal for the Asheville Steam Plant, 200 CPNL Drive, Arden, in Buncombe County, North Carolina. Duke Energy Progress, formerly Progress Energy, and before that CPNL, has operated a power plant at this site since the 1960s. Title V permits are required to be renewed every five years regardless of whether there have been any changes at the facility related to the air permit. The primary purpose of the Title V permit is to consolidate and identify existing local, state, and federal air quality requirements applicable to the facility, and to provide practical methods for determining compliance with these requirements. The agency has reviewed the permit renewal application and announced its intent to renew the Title V permit for Duke Energy Progress' Asheville Steam Electric Plant. This plant operates two coal-fired boilers and two natural gas number-two-fuel-oil-fired simple-cycle combustion turbines. The permit has been prepared in accordance with the WMCRAQA Air Quality Code, Chapter 17, Section 0500, Title V Procedures, and Title V of the Federal Clean Air Act. This permit will be enforceable by the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, or the EPA, and the citizens as defined under the federal Clean Air Act. The permit renewal concerns all of the air emission sources at the Asheville Steam Plant, including the two coal-fired boilers, units 1 and 2, and the two natural gas number-two-fuel-oil-fired simple-cycle combustion turbines, units 3 and 4. Under the permit, Duke Energy Progress must demonstrate that it can comply with state and federal rules for controlling particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, visible emissions, volatile organic compounds, and hazardous air pollutants. The plant uses various air pollution control devices, including a wet scrubber, electrostatic precipitators, and a selective catalytic reduction system. Other permit conditions require the facility operators to monitor air pollution control equipment, conduct periodic stack testing of emissions from boilers annually, and operate continuous emission monitors for nitrogen oxides and sulfur dioxide.
This concludes our presentation. If I would now hear from those in the audience who have checked on the registration form that they would like to present oral comments. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium. To ensure that our records are complete, please clearly state your name, who you're representing, and where you live. Your comments will be recorded, so please speak loudly and clearly toward the microphone. Again, if you wish to submit written copies of your oral comments, you should place them in the box or present them to Kevin Lance when you are called to speak. I will do my best to pronounce your names and apologize in advance for any errors. In order to save some time, I will also announce the next speaker, so that the person can also come to the front and be prepared to speak.
Do we do have three minutes? Three minutes? Hi, my name is Grant Millen. I live in Asheville, and I'm running for Asheville City Council because I'm very interested in the decommissioning of those coal units at Lake Julian. It's obvious that coal-fired electricity is particularly environmentally risky. On the issues that they are focused on, I just wrote some comments that I think it might be interesting to look into, use of monitors. When you get monitors, you're going to be working with modeling, and that might be useful, but the monitors won't be online until later this decade. What I'm proposing is that folks, particularly if you live in Asheville, take advantage of the progress that the current city council has made in a resolution called a Clean Energy Economy Resolution that's led to something called the Asheville Community Energy Plan and the Asheville Community Energy Plan Task Force that most people don't know about because the news media has not covered this. We should be interested in outcomes there. I'm going to be holding an event at the Lenore Ryan Asheville Chamber of Commerce Boardroom the weekend of May 22nd, 24th to look into answering the question, what would it take to turn off those coal-fired electricity generators at Lake Julian? Because there's all kinds of resources, whether it's the Department of Energy, universities, that we can tap into to answer that question. And it's very interesting to hear claims that wind and solar inefficiency will do that for us. That will help, of course, and we should be looking into using as much renewables as often as possible, but there's other technologies like microgrid that we should also be talking about. So my email is grantmillen@gmail.com, and I'm on Facebook. My company is InnoVograth, and I'm happy to talk to folks about solutions to speeding up the process to answering that question, what would it take to turn off the coal-fired units, the Duke coal-fired units at Lake Julian? That's all. Thanks.
Ms. Walker, before you go...
Oh, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Walker. Remind everybody that our timekeeper is this way, so... Turn. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joan Walker, and I'm here representing Mountain True. We work throughout western North Carolina, championing resilient forests, clean waters, and healthy communities. I'm a longtime resident of Buncombe County, a mom, and I'm worried about the impacts the Asheville Coal Plant is having on the air we all breathe. Expert analysis, as you mentioned, using EPA-approved modeling shows that the Asheville Coal Plant has caused unsafe levels of sulfur dioxide pollutions in neighborhoods and recreational areas throughout Buncombe County for years, with pollution levels above federal health bait standards, one out of every three to four days, and on some of those days, as much as 3.5 times above the standard. This board has the responsibility and the authority to ensure compliance with federal air quality standards, protect public health and the environment, and preserve the quality of life for all those in Buncombe County and our region. You can define numeric limits for the sulfur dioxide in this Title V permit, as you have done for this facility for years. Despite two expert reports showing that Duke is not running their scrubbers fully and is burning higher sulfur content coal resulting in these unsafe levels of SO2 in our community, the current draft permit includes the same numeric limits for SO2 this plant has had for years. Allowing the plant to emit 2.3 pounds of SO2 per million BTUs will not ensure compliance with the current National Ambient Air Quality Standards, which this board adopted in November 2011. This limit is so lenient, it could be easily met by a plant with no pollution control scrubbers, and it's important to note that every one of Duke Energy's coal plants in the rest of North Carolina has tighter limits for SO2 than this plant is allowed to emit. I understand that the state of North Carolina is still in the process of deciding if it will determine whether an area is attaining federal air quality standards by using monitoring or modeling. However, that process, which will take years, does not negate your legal authority to write a permit ensuring attainment of federal air quality standards, and only allow the Asheville Coal Plant to emit 0.029 pounds of SO2 per million BTU, which is what I'm asking for you to include in the permit. We cannot wait years while the public continues to pay the price for Duke's pollution. I feel confident that Duke can make a more protective permit by running their current pollution control scrubbers more, and that the public has already paid for, at full capacity, and reducing the use of higher sulfur content coal. All western North Carolinians deserve clean air, and we're depending on you to exercise your authority to ensure that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Fireman. I live in Mars Hill, and I'm a member of a community organization called Elders' Feers for Justice. I'm a retired physician. I practiced emergency medicine for over 30 years, and have seen the effects of bad air on the health of children and adults. I guarantee that you don't want to experience the terrible air hunger that these poor people have experienced when breathing toxic air. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh, when it was known as the Smoky City. In 1946, when I was three years old, Mayor David Lawrence said, quote, "I'm convinced that our people want clean air. There is no other single thing which will so dramatically improve the appearance, the health, the pride, and the spirit of the city." By 1964, eight years later, Pittsburgh's air was 90% cleaner. Lawrence's vision was that of a committed citizen, like you on the board and like you on staff, some of who are paid and some who are volunteered to serve our community and the land that we love, this city, and want the best for those living here. I settled in North Carolina because these old mountains felt like home, and want to ensure as best I can that they remain beautiful and healthy for those who choose to live here. I was surprised and dismayed then to read the first draft of the new permit you have proposed, which has the same values for sulfur dioxide as the prior permit. The amount of SO2 emissions allowed under the new permit, if passed, will not ensure ambient air concentrations of SO2 pollution that will meet the EPA health standards of 75 parts per billion that you adopted in 2011. Now I understand that the Asheville-Buncombe County area in which the EPA has not issued an official designation because there are no air models nor official guidelines for air monitoring here, but we can't wait till 2022 when the EPA will rule on the final state plans. Let's be clear, you have the authority to write a strong permit so that when the state and the EPA determine how North Carolina will model or monitor SO2 levels, we will meet the 75 parts per billion one-hour health standard. How do I know that you have this authority? Because your agency was established by the General Assembly, which gets its authority from the North Carolina Constitution, Section 2 of which reads, "All political power is vested and derived from the people. All government of right originates from the people, is founded upon their, our will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the whole." Please look around you at these people, people who, like the courageous David Lawrence, said that our people want clean air. You, the board, have the opportunity to be part of the government of right. Your neighbors in this auditorium are telling you to exercise your authority and responsibility to...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joy McConnell, and I live in far southeast Buncombe County. I don't know if the air from this plant reaches me. I hope not. I'm a retired clergywoman who retired to North Carolina for the fresh mountain air. Every morning, I'm blessed to be able to breathe fresh, I hope, fresh oxygen-filled air to nurture myself and my body. That is a blessing that I want for every one of my fellow citizens, especially the children of this area. I need that clean and fresh healing air for my lungs, which are badly scarred after almost 70 years of severe illness. I care about this issue because I had the bad fortune to grow up in the small town of West Chicago, Illinois, which we discovered during my 30s was a toxic waste dump. The source of the radioactive carcinogenic thorium and other poisonous substances was a company called Lindsay Lights. My oldest sibling, my brother, worked there during the summers and brought those poisons into our home on his shoes and clothes. Those poisons were spewed into our air every day. In our house, I was one of his baby sisters who crawled around on the floor with what he tracked in on his shoes, and we ran around barefoot in our neighborhood, which was a block from Lindsay Lights. In our town, many dozens, maybe hundreds of people suffered from asthma and other serious respiratory illnesses, as well as a very increased number of cancers over the years. A lot of my friends and their parents died early of cancers. I myself have been close to death several times because of mysterious illnesses. My pulmonary lung doctor discovered 15 years ago that my body had quit making immunoglobulins, the substances within our bodies that fight... I cannot afford to be breathing many times the standard of sulfur dioxide into my already compromised lungs. I do not want the children and citizens of Buncombe County and western North Carolina to suffer because of the toxins released by Duke Energy and other powerful corporations. I pray that this agency and others charged with protecting our health do everything they can to assure clean air and water for our beautiful western North Carolina and its vulnerable citizens. It is time to place health...
Ms. McConnell.
Okay. It is time to place health in front of profits.
Sabrina, Malcolm Joseph Sabrina, Duke Energy, Warlow. Justin Goldstein.
My name is Sabrina DeCarlo and I'm an Asheville city resident. Duke Energy has operated their scrubbers at less than 100% efficiency for over four years, at as low as 75% efficiency. They've also been burning higher sulfur coal, both of which have resulted in sulfur dioxide emissions of up to 3.5 times the safe limit set by the EPA. As we know, sulfur dioxide emissions are a major source of health damage and are the primary source of acid rain and regional haze. Although the WNC Regional Air Quality Agency Board has been apprised of Duke's procedures and their potential health impacts for months, the current draft Title V permit for Duke Energy does not reflect adequate sulfur dioxide emission limits, limits that would require Duke Energy to operate within the EPA safe standard for sulfur dioxide. The 2014 annual report of the WNC Regional Air Quality Agency states that, quote, "The mission of the agency is to monitor and regulate the air quality of the city of Asheville and Buncombe County to safeguard public health and the environment while preserving the quality of life and economic vitality in the area. The agency is responsible for implementing and enforcing the provisions of the Federal Clean Air Act and all additional state and local air quality regulations in Buncombe County," end quote. Given the agency's mission, the fact that it has the responsibility of implementing and enforcing the provisions of the Federal Clean Air Act, and the fact that it has the authority which regulates the Title V permits, it is the responsibility of the agency to safeguard public health and uphold the Clean Air Act regulations and other regulations by implementing safe sulfur dioxide emission limits in their Title V permits. I am therefore respectfully requesting that the agency revise the current draft Asheville Coal Plant Title V air pollution permit to include a numeric emission limit for sulfur dioxide that reflects the federal minimum standards and ensures the protection of public health, specifically a limit of 61.7 pounds per hour for each coal-burning unit equating to a plant-wide SO2 limit of .029 pounds per 1 million BTUs. And if that can't be done immediately, then at least include language that it should be done as soon as the EPA standards are set. I am requesting the agency take this action, not only because it is within the agency's power and mission, but because Duke Energy has already demonstrated that it will not self-regulate to protect public health and has routinely put profit above the welfare of North Carolinians. The only reasons Duke has for its current unsafe methods are to cut operating costs and because they can under their previous permit. Let's not allow them to continue to pollute Buncombe County's air. Our families deserve clean air. Duke Energy has the equipment to operate within the safe standards, equipment that we've already paid for. They make about 1 point billion a year, as of their last annual report, and I see these as profits that were stolen from the North Carolina people as we've already paid for this equipment. Why should we pay again for the pollution of Duke Energy when it's bringing in billions?
I'm Rabbi Justin Goldstein of Congregation Beth Israel in Asheville. Thank you for taking the time to hear from the people who have gathered here. And I'm not a scientist. I'm not going to pretend that I understand the mechanics of energy plants. But what I do know is 2,000 years ago, Jewish sages created a law that said a person should not discard of debris from their own property to public property. They then told a story that I'd like to briefly share, which involves a person who decided to discard debris from their own property to public property. And someone came across this person and said, "Why are you throwing debris from property which is not yours to property which is yours?" In other words, private property is temporary, but the public domain belongs to all of us. The story goes on to say that sometime later, that man discarding debris had to sell his property and while walking in that same public area tripped over that same debris which he had discarded, hearkening to the very well-known scriptural commandment, "Before the blind, do not place a stumbling block." The impact which your decision, your personal decision, has affects not only Duke Energy, not only the area immediately surrounding the plant, but affects the lives of every individual in western North Carolina, not only today, but for generations to come. That you, as individuals, have the power and authority to make sure that future generations have clean air to breathe, that you, as individuals, have the power and authority to not place a stumbling block before the blind. Because unlike physical debris, we cannot see the dangerous emissions in our air. So I urge you, from a place of moral imperative, to please use your authority to make sure that all of us, for generations to come, have clean air to breathe. Thank you for your time.
Rowdy Keeler. Sidney Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Rowdy. I'm representing Friends Against Butts, North Carolina's first cigarette recycling organization. I would like to start by pointing out how ridiculous it is that we are having this discussion in the first place. What we're here talking about is whether or not Duke should continue to pollute at a level that exceeds federal minimum health-based standards, that is, standards based on health. How is the fact that Duke has been poisoning the air we breathe for years an issue that needs this much discussion? Do we really think the EPA arbitrarily selected the numbers they chose for the safety standards? The limit in this draft allows for sulfur dioxide emissions that would create concentrations 80 times that. That is reckless and irresponsible. Our planet will... Our planet will purge itself of us if we continue to condone this kind of mindless pollution, and all in the name of the almighty dollar. Duke has proven time and time again that they care about profit, not people. They care about earnings, not the earth. We should be taking every step possible to not only pressure Duke to follow agreed-upon health standards, but to actively pursue renewable energies that are readily available and way more sustainable than the disgusting coal they continue to burn. So I beg of you, I beg of you, please, from my heart, revise the current draft Asheville Coal Plant Title V air pollution permit to include a numeric emission limit for sulfur dioxide that reflects federal minimum standards and ensures the protection of public health. Specify a limit of 61.7 pounds per hour for each coal-burning unit equating to a plant-wide sulfur dioxide limit of .029 pounds per 1 million British thermal units. Now, I know you have hearts, I know you're people, I know you can see all these people, and I'm pretty sure that nobody is here in opposition, you know, that is here to support the current permit. Is there anybody here that's supporting the current permit? There's nobody. So I ask you, when you're dead and gone, what do you want your legacy to be? That you were someone who was part of the problem, or that you were part of the solution? And most importantly, I think about this all the time, when your grandchildren look you in the eye and ask you what you did to protect our planet Earth, what are you going to say? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sidney Anderson. I live in north Asheville and study ecology and environmental biology at UNC Asheville. Duke Energy's Asheville Coal Plant is emitting concentrations of sulfur dioxide at concentrations as much as 3.5 times higher than those considered safe for human health by EPA standards. These harmful emissions are exceeding federal minimum health-based standards, one out of every three to four days, and are concentrating in residential and recreational areas such as Lester, Arden, and Bent Creek Experimental Forest. Personally, I really enjoy running, and I've noticed that every time I've run at Bent Creek Experimental Forest, I experience an unusual respiratory issues. I feel a shortness of breath and an unusual wheezing sensation. And as I continue to run at Bent Creek, my symptoms persist. And, um, so, sorry, sorry, guys. Anyway, so, as I, as I've continued to run at Bent Creek and noticed that my, my symptoms persist, I've decided to get an inhaler in hopes to feel comfortable while running. Not only are these respiratory issues unusual and uncomfortable for me, but also very scary. I'm here to ask that the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency revise the Asheville Coal Plant's Title V air pollution permit to include a limit of 61.7 pounds of SO2 per hour for each coal-burning unit, equating to a plant-wide SO2 limit of 0.29 pounds per 1 million BTUs. We all deserve clean and healthy air, and I'm depending on you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Cecil Bachwell. Megan Siler.
Hi. Cecil Bachwell. I'm here representing the Asheville City Council, which voted unanimously last night to deliver this letter from our mayor to you. And I live in Asheville. On behalf of the Asheville City Council, I am writing to express concern about the draft Title V air permit recently issued by the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency for Duke Energy's Asheville Steam Electric Plant. Specifically, council is concerned that the suggested permit limit for sulfur dioxide is insufficient to protect city and county residents from harmful air pollution, and we ask that you strengthen that limit to ensure our residents can breathe healthy air. As you know, even short-term exposure to SO2 is linked with an array of adverse respiratory effects, including bronchoconstriction and increased asthma symptoms. Elevated concentrations of SO2 in air leads to more emergency room visits and hospital admissions, particularly for children, the elderly, and people with asthma. According to a recent report that uses a model approved by the EPA for tracking SO2 pollution, emissions from the Asheville plant have been causing violations of the Ambient Air Quality Standard for SO2 established by EPA. Indeed, the report states the pollution in residential and recreational areas is at concentrations up to 3.5 times higher than levels EPA has determined to be safe. These exceedances have occurred approximately one out of every three to four days since 2010. I am concerned that the newly released draft air permit maintains the same SO2 emissions limit that the plant has had for years. This limit is nearly 80 times higher than the limit necessary to attain EPA's public health-based SO2 standard, and we believe it is insufficient to protect our community from the impacts of air pollution. The final Title V permit should contain limits that allow ambient air in the Asheville area to meet EPA's standard. We understand that limit to be no more than 61.7 pounds per hour of SO2 or plant-wide average of .029, you've heard the numbers. We also understand that these levels are achievable if the plant's air pollution controls are run at full efficiency, as they were when they were first installed, or if the plant stops using high sulfur content coal. Part of our job as elected officials is to ensure the safety of our community. There seems to be a clear path to addressing this problem and ensuring healthy air for our residents, and the first step on that path is for the plant's air permit to contain appropriate SO2 limits. Sincerely, Esther Manheimer. I want to add on my own, this is not for the whole council, come on, these, these rules that you're doing that are the same as they were before did not work. Hello? They did not work. You did not protect the health of our community. How can you impose the same rules again and pretend that you're doing your work? Thank you.
I'm Mayhen Siler. I'm a retired pastor, citizen here, about 12 years, active with Elders' Fierce for Justice. Thank you for listening. My comments are brief and simple. One, obvious lest we forget, clean air is non-negotiable for all that lives, including us humans. It's a gift, not a commodity we can modify or manipulate for short-term gain. Our responsibility, your responsibility, is to protect it, treasure it, and strive for its purity. My second comment, I urge you to place this question at the center of your decision-making. Who prospers from your action? Who benefits? I'm 80. Whatever you decide will not likely have much impact on my life. But I'm not here speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my grandchildren, for their children, their children's children. I'm speaking for your grandchildren and their children and their children's children. I'm speaking for them. I speak for them. I am their voice. You are their voice. Your action must benefit them. Our legacy to them must be clean air, cleaner than we now have, not less. I urge you to revise the current draft Asheville Coal Plant Title V pollution permit to include emission limit for SO2 that reflects federal health standards. Thank you.
Judy Maddox.
Hello. I'm Judy Maddox. I'm chair of the local Sierra Club, right here in western North Carolina. I live in Lester, North Carolina, and we represent over 6,000 members and supporters who love the environment, who love to hike, and who love clean air. We are very concerned, as you know, about sulfur dioxide, and we know that you have been given the right and the obligation...
as Lester, Arden, and Bent Creek Experimental Forest. Personally, I really enjoy running, and I've noticed that every time I've run at Bent Creek Experimental Forest, I experience an unusual respiratory issues. I feel a shortness of breath and an unusual wheezing sensation, and as I continue to run at Bent Creek, my symptoms persist. And, um, so, sorry, sorry guys. Anyway, so, as I, as I've continued to run at Bent Creek and noticed that my, my symptoms persist, I've decided to get an inhaler in hopes to feel comfortable while running. Not only are these respiratory issues unusual and uncomfortable for me, but also very scary. I'm here to ask that the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency revise the Asheville Coal Plant's Title V air pollution permit to include a limit of 61.7 pounds of SO2 per hour per each coal burning unit, equating to a plant-wide SO2 limit of 0.29 pounds per 1 million BTUs. We all deserve clean and healthy air, and I'm depending on you to do the right thing. Thank you.
I'm here representing the Asheville City Council, which voted unanimously last night to deliver this letter from our mayor to you. And I live in Asheville. On behalf of the Asheville City Council, I am writing to express concern about the draft Title V air permit recently issued by the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency for Duke Energy's Asheville Steam Electric Plant. Specifically, council is concerned that the suggested permit limit for sulfur dioxide is insufficient to protect city and county residents from harmful air pollution, and we ask that you strengthen that limit to ensure our residents can breathe healthy air. As you know, even short-term exposure to SO2 is linked with an array of adverse respiratory effects, including bronchoconstriction and increased asthma symptoms. Elevated concentrations of SO2 in air leads to more emergency room visits and hospital admissions, particularly for children, the elderly, and people with asthma. According to a recent report that uses a model approved by the EPA for tracking SO2 pollution, emissions from the Asheville Plant have been causing violations of the ambient air quality standard for SO2 established by EPA. Indeed, the report states the pollution in residential and recreational areas is at concentrations up to 3.5 times higher than levels EPA has determined to be safe. These exceedances have occurred approximately one out of every three to four days since 2010. I am concerned that the newly released draft air permit maintains the same SO2 emissions limit that the plant has had for years. This limit is nearly 80 times higher than the limit necessary to attain EPA's public health-based SO2 standard, and we believe it is insufficient to protect our community from the impacts of air pollution. The final Title V permit should contain limits that allow ambient air in the Asheville area to meet EPA's standard. We understand that limit to be no more than 61.7 pounds per hour of SO2 or plant-wide average of .029, you've heard the numbers. We also understand that these levels are achievable if the plant's air pollution controls are run at full efficiency as they were when they were first installed, or if the plant stops using high sulfur content coal. Part of our job as elected officials is to ensure the safety of our community. There seems to be a clear path to addressing this problem and ensuring healthy air for our residents, and the first step on that path is for the plant's air permit to contain appropriate SO2 limits. Sincerely, Esther Manheimer. I want to add on my own, this is not for the whole council, come on, these, these rules that you're doing that are the same as they were before did not work. Hello? They did not work. You did not protect the health of our community. How can you impose the same rules again and pretend that you're doing your work? Thank you.
I'm a retired pastor, citizen here, about 12 years, active with Elders Fierce for Justice. Thank you for listening. My comments are brief and simple. One, obvious lest we forget, clean air is non-negotiable for all that lives, including us humans. It's a gift, not a commodity we can modify or manipulate for short-term gain. Our responsibility, your responsibility, is to protect it, treasure it, and strive for its purity. My second comment, I urge you to place this question at the center of your decision-making. Who prospers from your action? Who benefits? I'm 80. Whatever you decide will not likely have much impact on my life, but I'm not here speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my grandchildren, for their children, their children's children. I'm speaking for your grandchildren, and their children, and their children's children. I'm speaking for them. I speak for them, I am their voice, you are their voice. Your action must benefit them. Our legacy to them must be clean air, cleaner than we now have, not less. I urge you to revise the current draft, Asheville Coal Plant Title V pollution permit to include emission limit for SO2 that reflects federal health standards. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Judy Maddox. I'm chair of the local Sierra Club, right here in Western North Carolina. I live in Lester, North Carolina, and we represent over 6,000 members and supporters who love the environment, who love to hike, and who love clean air. We are very concerned, as you know, about sulfur dioxide, and we know that you have been given the right and the obligation to protect us, to keep us safe in terms of air quality. So we ask that you adopt the EPA's safe standards for sulfur dioxide, and to do that now, not wait for the process questions regarding monitoring versus modeling. So we need you to write an air permit for the Asheville Steam Electric Plant that will make sure that the EPA's safe guidelines for our community's downwind of the plant are met. Please set in our current written air permit the standards of 0.029 pounds a million BTUs, and we need that now, not years from now. And once again, everybody here who is supporting these guidelines, these safe EPA guidelines, will you stand?
My name is Jane Leaping, and I am speaking to you today because I am a longtime outdoor enthusiast, and I feel very fortunate to live in Asheville where there are a wide variety of outdoor opportunities. I love the splendor of our mountains, and I want to keep this area not only beautiful, but also a healthy place to live or visit. More importantly, as a person of faith, I believe that we are called to care for and protect all of God's creation, including humans, animals, trees, and plants. As an outings leader for the Sierra Club, I have led hikes along the Blue Ridge Parkway in the Bent Creek area. I am particularly fond of this area because of its abundant wildflowers, its streams, its diverse ecosystems, and the tall canopy trees that provide shade and cooling in the summer. It grieves me to think that I may have unwillingly exposed myself and my fellow hikers to harmful concentrations of sulfur dioxide while we were out enjoying nature and presumably improving our health. You have undoubtedly seen the air modeling study by air resources specialists that shows sulfur dioxide concentrations three to three and a half times higher than the EPA health standard in areas downwind of the Asheville Power Plant, including the Bent Creek area. This study also indicates that minimum health standards have been exceeded about once every three to four days since 2010. If sulfur dioxide is being emitted from the Asheville Power Plant at levels harmful to human health, you can be sure that it also affects all of God's creatures: children, raccoons, deer, rabbits, bears, birds, bees, and our pets. Our wild animals are at even more risk since they spend their entire lives outdoors, yet we have been called to care for and protect all of God's creation. In addition to health effects from breathing SO2, sulfur dioxide causes acid rain, a big issue in the late 1970s. I am certainly reminded of the damage acid rain can cause to our forests every time I visit Mount Mitchell and see the dried and barren remains of trees still standing above the green and living. Yet, we have been called to care for and protect all of God's creation. The Asheville Plant has controlled its SO2 emissions in the past, so I'm not asking for an expensive technological fix. The equipment is installed, it has mounted efficiently in the past, and it can be operated at a level that will reduce SO2 emissions to safe concentrations. Currently, the draft permit allows SO2 emissions that would be 80 times higher than what is considered safe by the EPA. In this permit renewal, I urge you as the local regulatory agency to require Duke Energy to reduce emissions to levels consistent with the health standard and to care for and protect all of God's creation. Thank you.
Scott, I'm going to go ahead and apologize. Scott Hardeniri. Sorry. And Benji Burrell.
My name's Scott Hardeniri. I think I'm going to do this fast. My name's Scott Hardeniri. I am from Asheville, from the Oakley area in Asheville, North Carolina. I'm a father, a husband, director of the Creation Care Alliance of Western North Carolina, and a pastor, a member of the human family and of all of creation. I'm here to share my hopes that the Air Quality Board will lower the permitted sulfur dioxide emitted by the Duke Asheville Coal Plant to be within what the EPA deems as healthy limits right now. My young children and wife and I recently arrived to Asheville. We just moved here, and as we tried to get to know the area and our new home, we discovered the creeks and paths in the Bent Creek area. My children splashed in the creek there. We skipped among the beautiful trees and walked along the winding paths. In a time of our family's life of great transition and grief, we connected more deeply with one another. We were able to find healing and joy in the ripples of that water, in the light breeze, and the deep green of the leaves that waved around and above us. Our family was somehow welcomed by this place, and for us, the Bent Creek area became sacred ground. It's this kind of hospitality, this welcome of connection, healing, compassion, joy, and justice that is found so often in the sacred texts of my spiritual tradition, the hospitality of caring for the sick, welcoming the stranger, feeding the hungry. These were not only nice things to do, but indicated in the scriptures the very presence of God. As a Christian, I'm invited to embody that kind of hospitality, the hospitality of a loving God everywhere I go. And so tonight, I speak on behalf of a deep hospitality, a hospitality that has been spoken of for generations, an ancient hospitality, a hospitality that is desperately needed in our fragmented world. For the people who live, work, and play in this community, and for all the creatures great and small, critical air is clean air. Clean air is critical air for a future that is hospitable to all of life. This is an important opportunity for you and for this board to partner, to come together with this community and with Duke Energy to create a more hospitable future, not just for the kids splashing around in Bent Creek, but for the hills of Western North Carolina and our entire planet. Thank you for your time.
My name is Benji Burrell. I live here in Asheville, in the Charlotte Street neighborhood. I want to thank you for having this, this hearing, because I know it's not easy to do what you do as members of the Air Quality Board, and I want to thank you for your job, your work thus far, and your future work in protecting us as citizens. So, my fiancee and I both have respiratory issues seasonally, and we know what it's like to not be able to breathe very well, so this hits home. But I spent a lot of time in the southern West Virginia, and I, I spent a lot of time with miners who worked in the upper Big Branch Mine, and those folks complained about problems in the mine and how supervisors were overlooking things that could have kept everyone, all the shift workers, safe. And it's those supervisors who are both going to jail and feeling terrible for the rest of their lives for overlooking those problems in mine when there was explosions in the mine. And you're in the same boat here. If you do not protect to the greatest extent possible the air quality in our region, then additional illness, human illness, and human deaths are on your shoulders, and it's your responsibility. So my understanding is that there have been estimates made using EPA-approved modeling techniques that there could be 80 times higher the acceptable and healthy limits in terms of air quality, in terms of sulfur concentration in the region surrounding the plant. That's where I live, that's where all these people live. So I'm asking you to bump up the proposal, the limit, up to .029 pounds per million BTU of sulfur dioxide. And again, I thank you for, myself and everyone here, for doing the right thing and protecting us, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, love creation. I'm Phil Besessi, a professional engineer, speaking from a social justice viewpoint. As a science-based engineer and a founding member of the Association of Energy Engineers, as an acumenical person of faith and a member of the Creation Care Alliance of Western North Carolina, as a social justice advocate and a member of the Physicians for Social Responsibility. Tomorrow, you'll be able to go to my website and see what I've said and a lot else. I speak for all of creation, the people who can't speak for themselves, and the animals, the trees, the bees, the birds, the fish, the farm animals, our pets, our children, and our elders. Clean air and water is a human right guaranteed by our North Carolina Constitution. I hope to change attitudes and policies from exploitation to love creation. The natural world follows everlasting laws. We must learn from nature and be guided by observing all of creation. The earth receives abundant energy from the sun. We must harvest it, not fight it. Nature does not waste. All religions espouse using the gifts of nature wisely and not wasting. All of us, by loving creation, can change our lives and improve our health. Good science and engineering guided by the love of nature and living by basic principles and ethics, not just by doing the minimum that the law requires, will improve lives. That's a big payback. My hope is that all of us will stop dualistic thinking, start reasoning and dialoguing, and promote holistic thinking. We then will obey the laws of nature, stop polluting and wasting, and get back to effective healthy living, all because we love creation. I will live to 100 or die hiking if I have clean air.
I'm Stephen Holsonbeck, and I live in North Asheville, and I'm a yoga teacher and representing Yavis Bioncoul, that merges yoga and activism. While researching sulfur dioxide emissions in Asheville, the EPA air emission sources page showed data that the Blue Ridge Paper Products Plant put out 8,512 tons of sulfur dioxide in 2011 compared to the 2,242 tons put out by the Asheville Steam Electric Plant. It seems like the primary concern are the emissions coming out of the Asheville Steam Electric Plant, yet understanding that we live on a sphere and that many emitted chemical compounds put to the water or air are going to be there for who knows how long until the right chemical conditions are created to encourage decomposition, and by that time, we may all be dead. To prevent this possibility, please revise the current Asheville Coal Plant Title V air pollution permit to include a numeric emission limit for SO2 that reflects federal minimum standards. Specify a limit of 61.7 pounds per hour for every federally regulated unit with emissions, equating to plant-wide sulfur dioxide limits of .029 pounds per million BTUs. Self-accountability is an often overlooked aspect of any public concern. Truly, the plant emissions are consequences of our everyday actions. Take a moment to consider adjustments to the way we conduct our lives that can significantly reduce SO2 emissions. By transitioning more fully to digital communications, we can greatly reduce the demand for paper products, definitely reducing sulfur dioxide emissions and perhaps saving the lumber industry from cutting Big Ivy. During this past winter, I ran a space heater only while practicing yoga in the morning. Sometimes it was like doing yoga in the Arctic, yet it greatly reduced the energy bill, and I stayed relatively warm simply by layering at the start of the day. I also made sure the apartment windows were secured and weather stripped to ensure heat did not escape. Being a bottom-floor apartment, I have not yet had to run the air conditioner. I purchased a pressure cooker, which has made meals much quicker to prepare and drastically reduce the need for oven and stove top, concurrently decreasing the energy bill. By doing our part as individuals to reduce the relatively superfluous use of energy-consuming devices, we can summon the integrity necessary to ask Duke Energy for more efficient solar energy system and microgrids to supply the city's electrical needs. Solar provides a safer supply of energy and will prevent subterranean pollutants being combusted into the ecological systems on which our life depends. We can also ask the state to approve the Energy Freedom Act H.R. 245 that will allow solar companies to sell energy directly to homeowners, making solar energy exponentially more accessible for homeowners and solar system suppliers and installers. The Emissions Collection and Monitoring Plan System, ECMPS, is a desktop tool that emitter sources must use to submit monitoring plans, QA data, and emission data to the EPA. Can those quarterly emissions data from the ECMPS be submitted as public data to a website hosted by the EPA such that providing public access to information about quarterly emissions will increase accountability for the emitters? Thanks.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. I go by J.D., so that, I didn't write that on the card, it would have made it a lot easier. How about that? All right. Prior to coming tonight, I went onto your, your website, and I'm going to read the first paragraph that is on your website, and it describes, "Clean air is essential to public health, the environment, and the economy in North Carolina. We need clean air so people can breathe without triggering asthma and other health problems. We need clean air to preserve our forest streams, lakes, and public recreation areas. We need clean air so citizens can view scenery in our mountains, parks, and coastal areas. We need clean air to sustain tourism, forestry, and other aspects of the economy." That's from your website. I too, I too am asking you to revise your current draft to allow a limit of 0.029 pounds for 1 million BTUs. EPA has delegated authority to you all to enforce federal laws, federal regulations dealing with air pollution. After reviewing the WNC A Regional Air Quality Minimum Health Standards, I question the legal authority to supersede and lesser existing federal laws. However, you do have the authority to make them stricter, and, and I would like for you to do that. do that. If you would, reference 40 CFR 52, Executive Order 13045, Protection of Children from Environmental Health and Safety Risks. This draft has the potential to affect children and elderly. EPA and you is required to evaluate the environmental health and safety effects of the planned rule on children and explain why the planned regulation is preferable to others and potentially effective and reasonable alternatives. My name is Bruce Clark. I live in the Fairview area. I moved to Asheville for clean mountain air, a hike and bike in Bend Creek area. As I pedal to the top of the ridge above Bend Creek, I look out across the valley to Skyland and Arden, and there's the stack belching out sulfur dioxide. We bikers and hikers expect a safe limit of 61.7 pounds per hour per generating unit to not be exceeded. That is the healthy human limit. Governor McCrory, who retired from Duke after 28 years, might be okay with Duke's performance, but I, as a customer paying for Duke to be in business, am not okay. I'm not okay with what they have done with their coal ash spills into our rivers, and I'm not okay with what they want to do to our air with this outrageous permit request. Please fix this mistake. Thank you.
This is Lemkin from Lincoln. I can't hold it. It's Aaron or Eric Suton.
Good evening. I'm Robert Lemko. My wife and I currently live in South Asheville. We moved to South Asheville from Southern California approximately three and a half years ago, and I well know the effects of air pollution. We lived in what is euphemistically referred to as inland empire, Pomona Valley, an area surrounded by mountains and hills, but most of the time, you wouldn't know it because of the air pollution. My wife, as a result of the air pollution, developed cough variant asthma. As a result, she endured eight years of therapy and asthma allergy injections. We left Southern California to remove ourselves from the air pollution. It's imperative that this board adopt Duke regulations being required to meet EPA standards. We love the Blue Ridge. Although we understand that Duke Energy is a primary economic driver in this community, the board should also be aware that the second-leading industry in Asheville is tourism. Tourists come to Asheville to view the beautiful, pristine mountains, and we do not want Asheville, this area, to become Southern California. Thank you.
Suton. I don't have a comment to make. Just in order to move us along just a little bit quicker, because I calculated the numbers because of the time I have for the building, I'm going to call four names so I can get everybody down a little bit faster. Steve Rasmussen, Ken Brain, Danielle Hilton, and Tom Tribble.
Hi. My name's Steve Rasmussen. About a decade ago, when I was an environmental reporter for Mountain Express, I saw this agency take the lead in saving our mountains from acid rain caused by burning unscrubbed coal. At the same time, I know you have to make the best decisions you can within the narrow constraints you're working under that are imposed on you by the political process in Raleigh and Washington. What I would like to focus on is I'm deeply concerned about Duke's reported failure to run its scrubbers at full efficiency. There's a bigger ecological picture at stake here. My understanding is that since the use of scrubbers has become standard practice around the country, coal-fired power plants have largely switched to burning the cheap, high-sulfur coal that comes from the Northeast and Midwest rather than the low-sulfur coal that does come from mountaintop removal in West Virginia and Kentucky. Now, there's no good way to mine coal, and of course, it's a fundamentally unsustainable technology, but at least in theory, we don't want our coal coming from other people's mountains next door to us, at least in theory. That's why low SO2 limits and the diligent use of scrubbing technology to clean this high-sulfur coal is all the more important. And it depends on the maximum use of the best available technology as well as the lowest possible SO2 limits. And some plants in other parts of the country have continued to burn high-sulfur coal even when they take their scrubbers offline. It's apparently not like they keep a stock of low-sulfur coal to burn when they can't use their scrubbers. So I really urge you, at the very least, to make sure that Duke is not allowed to slack off on its responsibilities to keep its smokestacks every bit as clean as they actually can. I don't want to see Duke switching to low-sulfur coal from mountaintop removal just to avoid running their equipment properly. Thank you.
My name is Ken Brain. I live in the Lester area. And first of all, I want to thank you, both the staff and you, the board members, for the job you're doing, and it's a tough one. And secondly, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to have a public hearing to hear the public's views on this. As you have probably noticed, people are passionate about clean air in this area. And thank you for giving us a chance to express our passion and how much we care. I grew up in a home where my mother suffered from asthma, and for many years, I saw her suffering, trying to breathe and struggling to breathe. And I really plead with you not to delay implementing safe standards for another five to seven years while people have to suffer through what I saw my mother going through. It's heartbreaking to watch, and anything we can do to set limits that would prevent anyone from having to go through that, we should do. Clean air is important. I moved to, retired here seven years ago, and one of the reasons was because I enjoy the outdoors, and the air that we breathe is an important part of all of our ability to enjoy the outdoors. It's important to our economy. We have a tourism-based economy. We have companies moving in here because of the quality of life. And the last thing we need to do for our economy is to get a reputation of having air that's not safe to breathe at certain elevations. So I would encourage you to think about that as you're setting the next standard. I have to admit, I'm a bit puzzled with the opening statement saying that you don't feel that you have the authority to set a standard lower than what was in the previous permit, particularly when our research shows that every other Duke Energy plant in North Carolina has a lower limit and a more stringent limit in their permits than what you're proposing. That just doesn't make sense. So I really would ask you to use your authority to set the SO2 limit at the EPA-determined safe level for healthy living. And I'm not going to repeat the numbers again. You guys have those memorized by now, but you know what they are. So please, take the authority that you've got, that you've been delegated, and do the right thing to protect our health.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Hilton, and I'm representing Moms Clean Air Force, which is a national organization and that boasts over 450,000 members in the country and 14,000 members in the state of North Carolina. I drove here from Charlotte, North Carolina. Moms Clean Air Force is a community of moms and dads united against air pollution, including the urgent crisis of climate change for the sake of our kids' health. Just as the parents fought 40 years ago, 1971, to protect our children and get the Clean Air Act passed by President Nixon, we work in that same way. We're just doing it because it's the right thing to do. I stand before you now. First, I want to thank you for your service, and I actually stand before you now, I feel like I'm on the precipice of hope. And I see you all as our champions because you have an authority and you also have the ability, and now you're getting much more information to make responsible decision about what to do for our children and the air. I'm speaking for children today because they don't have the agency to speak for themselves. I'm a parent, and a lot of times, my child doesn't have the ability to tell me what she needs, and I don't, but I have to speak for her. So I'm representing my child, McKenna. If you're here representing a child, maybe your own child, please stand up and let it be known that we don't stand, we're not an auditorium of people. We're an auditorium representing many. Many of us, children are among the most vulnerable populations, and they are the most vulnerable partly because they're developing, and they aren't little adults. They take in more air with their activity level and the way that they're developing. And so what that means is the children are actually taking in more toxic SO2 than you or I can take in. And so we have a responsibility to protect these children who don't have the ability to do that for themselves. I urge you to be responsible, family members, parents, community members, and get the limit on SO2 down so that the emissions match or better the emissions that are set by the EPA. Those emissions were set in order to protect our public health, and they were set for a good reason, and I hope that you all consider that in your decision. Thank you.
My name is Tom Tribble, and I live in Asheville. I'm the president of the Elijah Mitchell Audubon Society, the local chapter of the National Audubon Society, and I represent the more than 1,300 members of Elijah Mitchell Audubon, covering about five counties in western North Carolina. In September of 2014, the National Audubon Society released a climate science study documenting that more than 200 species of birds in North Carolina are severely threatened by global warming, and many could go extinct if we did not act. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions such as sulfur dioxide is critical to mitigate and reduce the effects of global warming. Duke Energy's Asheville Coal Plant has been admitting harmful sulfur dioxide pollution at levels considered unsafe by EPA for many years. So on behalf of the 1,300 members of Elijah Mitchell Audubon, I ask the Regional Air Quality Agency Board to revise the SO2 emission limit included in the Asheville Coal Plant's new air permit to those numbers that you've heard from all the previous speakers. This will help ensure that communities downwind are protected from unsafe levels of pollution. Your decision will be important for the health of our citizens, and especially children, and our children's children, and for birds. Birds sing beautifully. I heard a lot of them today, but they cannot speak.
Well, I'm not going to repeat all the numbers that have been spoken here over and over and over, which was my original thought. We keep hearing about 3.5 times the EPA health standards. That's been documented by the Sierra Club on sites downwind from the plant. I have been listening to the arguments, and I've been listening to the response from Duke today. One of the things they are saying is that they are meeting the standards and that they're being very responsible and monitoring very carefully. I question their track record in North Carolina based on what we're seeing in the rivers and some of the other things. So I question what they're saying, but I'm sure they are monitoring, and they are following the legal limit that you have set from the standards previously set out for them. I really do not understand, and I wish I did, how it can be legal for us to be, for them to be 3.5 times the health standards set by the federal guidelines for health. I don't understand that. So someone, at some point, maybe can explain that, but hopefully, you do have the power to meet those minimum, if not, you know, standards for health, hopefully. I also hear from Duke that it's expensive to run those scrubbers. How expensive do you think emergency room visits are for the people living on some of these ridge tops? Who is going to pay for that? I mean, I understand there are some things in place, Medicare, Medicaid, but who's really paying for that? If you have insurance, everybody's insurance goes up. If we start making lots of claims, we're all going to pay for that, and it's going to be really expensive. Do we really want to pay at the back end where our health has been sacrificed, the people we love, our neighbors, our children? I also heard Duke say it's really an important plant. Fine, run the scrubbers consistently. Thank you.
We need to change our matter real quick.
I'm Susan Preston, and I came tonight to ask that you require Duke Power to do the right thing. I'm a nurse practitioner and have a special concern for kids and for the rise I see in asthma. We all want to breathe clean air, but it's especially important for our children. I also speak as a person of faith with great love for our rivers, mountains, and air and all that God has created. I'm involved in caring for creation at my church, Grace Covenant Presbyterian and Circle of Mercy. I would like to believe that Duke Power would not want to hurt the earth nor the people that live on her. Is it because of greed that Duke Power doesn't run the scrubbers that reduce CO2 and SO2 that is put off into the atmosphere with burning coal? We're asking so very little here, to run the scrubbers that have already been installed all the time, to run them all the time, and also to stop burning coal that is high in sulfur content. I speak to this board, and I'm thankful for you all, to appeal to your integrity and desire to do the right thing for our wonderful mountains, to not pass a permit for Duke Power that would allow sulfur dioxide pollution to be higher than what the EPA says is safe. I ask this as a parent, as a nurse practitioner who treats children with asthma, and as a person of faith who cares for God's creation. Thank you.
I'm Mark Thirko, and I live in Swananoa, and I'm a volunteer with the Sierra Club. Thank you for the time that you're giving this tonight. This is a great effort. I have five short points that I believe to be true, and this will take less than a minute. First, sulfur dioxide is bad for you. Second, Duke Energy's plant in Asheville is knowingly producing sulfur dioxide at levels that are over the EPA limits and therefore bad for you. Third, they're doing this because it's cheaper to do that than to run their pollution control equipment at proper levels and use low-sulfur coal. Fourth, if your children or grandchildren were living in an area that you knew to have hazardous levels of sulfur dioxide according to these standards, you'd say someone should do something. Fifth, collectively, you're that someone. You have the authority, and I believe you have the obligation to make this right. Thanks. Thanks.
My name is Samuel Special. I was trained as a toxicologist and pharmacologist and I retired from the National Institutes of Health as a scientist there. And I'm motivated to speak before you largely because I see that these draft levels seem higher than we really need. I'm concerned about the chronic exposure, as many people have mentioned, especially in children. For each life-giving breath you take in of oxygen with these elevated SO2 levels, you're bringing that down into the lungs, exposing those cells that depend on exchange of oxygen and CO2 to give you your health, especially with children. Whatever level, the chronic exposure, the repeated physical activity that takes in more, this is all contributing to the problems that we see with asthma in children. And it's something we're going to pay for down the road. Duke may get profits this year, may pay their officials high salaries, but what cost for the people that actually live here are going to expose to that. I see your role as an interface between the community that stand behind me and what you have to do in terms of giving the rules and regulations. It's not an easy job and I appreciate that and thank you for having this, but think of the chronic down-the-road effects when you make your decisions. Thanks.
My name is Robert Zeiber. I'm here tonight as an individual and a resident of South Asheville. I'm a property owner there and on a daily basis I try and get out into the countryside there, particularly Bend Creek area. I'm a member of the North Carolina Arboretum and I like to hike and bicycle and walk through there. And if I could just interject a little bit of humor here, I'm wondering if you could get Duke to make those smokestacks a little bit higher and send that pollution a little further away from where I am. But no, seriously, you do have the ability to get them to reduce that pollution that's coming out of those smokestacks. And we've heard a lot of previous speakers talk about the various numbers and all that kind of stuff, which is way beyond my level. But I'm challenging you to do better than that. Look at the science and figure out what you can do to make this safer for us, to prevent that pollution from coming out in the first place and to improve the health of everybody, whether they're residents, whether they're passing through, whatever reason they happen to be within that pollution plume that's coming off of those plants. Previously, we heard a short history of your agency and how it was established and it's my understanding the agency has the authority to set these limits and to protect my health and the health of everybody that's in this area and in Buncombe County. And I'm challenging you to be proactive with that and to look at that science and to do what's right for the people that have paid for this plant and that live there and please issue an air quality permit that protects all the citizens in this area. And thank you for your time.
My name's Leslie Poplaski and I'm here in behalf of the earth and our environment, our mountains, the children, people who you are here to protect. I implore you to please do the right thing and do what you're here to do. I was inspired by what the rabbi said about their writings of the Jewish early writings and one of my favorite, Herman Joshua Heschel, who said, "We are not all guilty, but we are all responsible." And we are here trying to be responsible and speaking out and doing what we can to implore you to please do the right thing. And you are in a position of authority, so you are more than responsible and you have to sleep with, be able to go to sleep at night and think about the impacts that your decisions are going to make on the people and especially the children and the animals and the innocent people in our environment and the trees who need, we need a clean environment. And with so many elegant solutions now, I think New Zealand does 80% solar, there's a, there is, there is a town in Germany that does solar energy and they produce four times the energy that their town needs and uses just on the solar that they have. And it can, it can definitely be done and we need to start looking ahead and I hope that Duke can be a part of this solution, Duke Energy, and that we can start doing things and moving ahead and instead of being behind, but being a first in the environment and taking care of our beautiful earth, our one and only earth before it's too late. Thank you for letting us.
Cassie Whiteside, Vijay Kapoor, Anne DeWise, Timothy Vercel.
I'm Cassie and I'm not going to say anything because others have said it so eloquently and second everything.
Vijay Kapoor.
Good evening. My name is Vijay Kapoor. I thank the, I thank the board and the staff for the opportunity tonight. I do a lot of work in the public sector. Usually I'm on the receiving ends of these comments and it's a lot easier to be on this side of the table. I live in the Ballentry Section in South Asheville. We submitted a comment with 14 other families. Those of you who are familiar with the geography, that is just south of the Park Avenue area, which was one of the areas that in the Sierra Club study was noted that had the potential of being in an area with exceedingly high sulfur dioxide levels. I am trained as an attorney and as my wife was and, you know, we don't have any affiliation with any of the groups here. We moved here about a year ago. But we've sort of looked at the studies and we've been trying to kind of figure this out. We've got two young kids who at this moment have left the room. It's a little bit quiet now. But, but, but what we've been trying to figure out in all honesty here is trying to understand, you know, what the levels are. Our comments, you know, essentially number one was on the levels. You've heard those, but the second thing we were asking for was really monitoring here. We have a significant concern about what levels of SO2 are in this, in that area, in those residential areas. I'll tell you, the first thing I did after seeing those, those numbers and you all are in the enforcement thing is I went on amazon.com to see if there was actually a, some sort of ambient air system that I could buy to go up and try and check this. And, and, you know, and, you know, trying to do that, there was nothing, obviously, as you all know, this is sort of ridiculous to do, that could measure it in the levels that the EPA does. But what we're really imploring you to do is this. I mean, I'm a father, you know, my, we've got elderly people, we've got children in our neighborhood. One of the biggest concerns we have right now is we just don't know what those levels are. Right? I mean, we can talk about what the, what the permit levels that you all have to set are, but we don't really know what those are. And what we're asking and really imploring you all, either as part of this permitting process or part of, part of your job and part of your mission through this, is to put up some of these monitoring systems. We can't wait to 17. I mean, I can't do that as a dad. Right? I'll be happy to try and help raise the money, right, for you all to buy some of the equipment. And I actually mean that. I truly do. We just want to know the answer on this because right now, you know, there's, you know, the Sierra Club saying one thing, Duke Energy's saying the other thing. It'd be nice if we just actually got an answer. So we appreciate the time. Thank you for all you are doing. We implore you to go at the lower levels and we also ask you all to seriously consider the, the monitoring issue. Thank you all for all you do.
My name is Anne DeWise. I'm from West Asheville. Thank you for the opportunity that you're giving us to speak this evening. I moved back to my native state of North Carolina about a year and a half ago with the goal of savoring the beauty of western North Carolina, including its clean air. I'm fortunate enough to live in a LEED-certified green home, silver-certified home heated by solar collectors and I believe in energy conservation and I'm very concerned about the environment. In maintaining the Asheville Steam Electric Plant so as to reduce expensive, Duke Energy has already been in violation of EPA standards for years so that they could increase their bottom line. Duke Energy's a mega corporation now. It was not very large when I was growing up in Charlotte, but it's huge now and it wheels immense clout in political and government arenas. It's completely unacceptable that Duke Energy be allowed to continue these lax practices which result in serious negative health consequences for many of us living in the shadow of this electric plant. It's even less acceptable to contemplate that drastically less, not more stringent regulations may be in place. The role of the Regional Air Quality Agency is to ensure clean air for citizens of western North Carolina and you don't have to wait years, the years it will take for the modeling or monitoring data to come in. You can do that now. So I ask you, seize your authority, take your responsibility, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. I am a resident over on east side of town, East Asheville, and zoology professional who actually practices aquaculture. I've got an ocean farm in southeast Florida, which sounds like a long way away from here. And it is, but along the way of practicing that business that I operate, I've come to know a number of the marine biology professionals in states such as North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida. And I was recently saddened to learn about the passing of a really dedicated researcher who was studying dolphins in Biscayne Bay off the southern coast of Florida. And his findings were very interesting. He was tracking different family groups over a long, long period of time. His entire career was dedicated to this effort. And he found that due to heavy metal concentrations in the environment that were being bioaccumulated through the food chain, the dolphins in this area were exhibiting some real strange mortality patterns. For example, the females were outliving the male porpoises very significantly. And the finding after doing autopsies and studying the tissues in the porpoises was, led to the conclusion that the females were able to dump their body burden of heavy metals in their, the mother's milk that they delivered to their babies. And, you know, they're mammals like us. And it was very interesting that, you know, this allowed the females to last longer. The contrary side of that or the other side that was very kind of depressing is that the firstborn of these female porpoises would suffer very high rates of mortality. So they're getting all this body burden of mercury from the females and they're dying and the females are continuing, continuing to live. And so this is the situation there in the south of Florida. And, you know, it may seem kind of very irrelevant to our situation here, hundreds of miles away from the ocean, but there are a lot of commonalities that you have to kind of consider. You know, the food chain, there are different levels both on land and in the ocean. As you move up the food chain, the concentrations of these sorts of pollutants concentrate further. And remembering that we all have advisories for eating fish in our country these days because of mercury. Also, the Department of Energy has demonstrated that the main source of mercury in our environment, man-made source, is coal fire power. And so we got to remember, we're the top of the food chain here this far from the oceans and we need to learn the lessons that we're learning in the oceans here as soon as possible. Thank you.
Laura Wenzel, Kelly Martin, Margaret Jaeger, and Paul Larkes.
Good evening. My name is Laura Wenzel. I'm with Medical Advocates for Healthy Air, a program of Clean Air Carolina, which is a statewide organization with the mission of ensuring healthy air for all. I personally live in Carrboro, but I have submitted to you a petition signed by 17 of our members of these comments. We oppose the proposed permit because of the sulfur dioxide's effect on North Carolinians' health. I'd like to invite you to take a deep breath. It should feel good. The ability to take a deep breath is something so normal that most of us take it for granted. It relieves stress, lowers our blood pressure, and increases energy. It's a gift, one that we should do everything possible to protect. Sulfur dioxide annihilates that freedom to take a deep breath and makes us choke and wheeze, tightens our chest, fills our lungs with fluid, hurts our eyes, burns our nose and throat and skin. In addition to being a noxious gas on its own, sulfur dioxide carries fine particles deep into our lungs at levels beyond any possible treatment. Short-term exposure to high levels of sulfur dioxide can kill us and long-term exposure can destroy our lungs and intensify heart disease. The EPA cites studies showing that for people with asthma, even low levels can trigger attacks and scrambles to the emergency room, making it impossible to exercise outdoors and enjoy our mountains. Because sulfur dioxide is so toxic, our government carefully regulates how much is allowed to be emitted into our air. Duke Energy has regularly and severely violated these rules at its Asheville plant over several years. Your mission as the air quality agency is to safeguard public health and the environment while preserving the quality of life and economic vitality of the area. The new permit under consideration would allow the limit of sulfur dioxide emissions to be nearly 80 times higher than what is necessary to attain the EPA standard designed to protect our health. This permit unequivocally fails to protect our health, degrades our quality of life, and threatens our long-term economic vitality. The American Lung Association finds that nearly 20,000 children and adults in Buncombe County already suffer from asthma and have difficulty taking that deep breath that we so love. Increased sulfur dioxide emissions could make this number even larger. This not only degrades the quality of life for these individuals, it sabotages our economy by increasing absences from school and work, and asthma is the largest cause of absence in North Carolina schools. We must guard against allowing the siren song of fleeting profit to hijack our heritage of fresh, pure mountain air. As medical and public health professionals, Medical Advocates for Healthy Air urges the agency to revise the permit to the numbers that you have heard, the standard necessary to ensure our ability to continue taking that deep breath. Thank you.
I am Kelly Martin. I work with the Sierra Club and I'm also a mother of three children called Asheville Home for the past 16 years. And I've sat here tonight, like you all, listening to so many people speak about their concerns for clean air, healthy communities, and their love of this beautiful mountain area that we are blessed to live in. And I actually am inspired by people's stories and by people coming out tonight to voice their concerns. And I'm also surprisingly hopeful because I trust that you all have heard these concerns, that you've heard the concerns of mothers, of grandparents, runners, and mountain bikers, of medical health professionals, of faith leaders, and of regular folks. And I trust that you will incorporate these concerns into your thinking as you make your deliberations on the final Title V air permit for Duke Energy's Asheville Coal Plant. Because you all, this agency, and the members of the board that are present, and they're hard to identify in the crowd, but I just want to say thank you to the members of the board that are here and thank you to all of you for hosting this public hearing and giving us the opportunity to speak. And you all have been entrusted with the authority and the responsibility to set limits on the amount of air pollution that can be emitted from the Asheville Coal Plant. And as you've heard over and over tonight, the limit, the numeric limit that's set for SO2 pollution in the draft air permit is far too high. It's set so high that a coal plant without any pollution controls at all could meet the limit. It's set so high that people that living and recreating in areas downwind of the plant are at risk of exposure to unsafe levels of air pollution. But the good news is that you can change this. You can write a permit to protect our community. You can lower the numeric limit on SO2 pollution, or SO2 emissions allowed from the coal plant to one that reflects what's needed to make sure that downwind communities can breathe easier. So as you know, as you well know, Duke Energy has these pollution controls. They have scrubbers that we, as Duke Energy customers, all paid for and they are all installed on the coal plant. And when they were first... And when they were first installed, the sulfur dioxide emission rates dropped dramatically. But then, just a few years later, the emissions levels started to go back up. We know this from Duke's own self-reported data. And because of this, we know that lower levels of pollution are possible and are achievable and are necessary. And that's why we implore you to lower the limit for SO2 pollution, to protect our communities and to do the right thing and protect our health and this beautiful area we live in. Thank you very much for hosting us.
My name is Margaret Jaeger. I live in East Asheville. I lived in California, and I was told I had COPD. So I went on EPA website, and I looked at your, or our zip code, and I looked at the zip code where I lived. Where I lived was a D, and you were a B, and that, or we were a B. And that was back in 2007. So I moved out here for better air. And I go back and forth between here and California because of family. And for different circumstances, I'm tested out there and I'm tested here. When I am tested in California, after I've been there for a little while, my COPD numbers come up worse. When I'm tested out here, my COPD numbers come up much better. In fact, the last one was slightly COPD. So I think it's, you know, it's in the best interest of everyone, people that live here, people that visit here, businesses that are here, even Duke Energy. It's in the best interest of everybody to get the EPA standard back and to the 2006. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Paul Bartels. I'm from Fairview, and thank you for listening. And I just really have more of a request or a question. And one thing that I have not heard in any of this is any explanation for why we would keep the existing standards in the current permit. What's the rationale for status quo? I don't understand. Thank you.
Mary Ann Radkov, Lisa Gay Hall.
I'm Mary Ann Radkov. My husband and I live in Arden, and we are actually recent residents. And I was amazed that we've got two Superfund sites in Lake Julian. We didn't have that in Ohio, but anyway. Having served myself in public capacities, I would like to thank the members of the board for their public service. And as many people here have brought up tonight, it is your duty, probably your statutory duty, to protect the interests of all these folks out here that have come to speak and to all the folks that breathe in this air. It's a duty to public health, not a duty to Duke Energy. Duke Energy, they've got legions of engineers and attorneys. You set the standards. They make the business decisions they have to make to meet those standards. As I understand it, the people here that have lived here for a while have already paid for the scrubbers that are being underutilized. It is a business decision for Duke whether or not to use those standards, but you, rather to use those devices, but you have to set the standards. That is your job. And I believe, from what I've heard tonight and what I've read, that you're actually on public notice because of the study that was done indicating that the emissions clearly exceed the statutory requirements of the Environmental Protection Agency. So I urge you, do not kick this down the road. Set the standards now. The numeric emission standards for SO2 that will protect our public health. And thank you for your time.
My name is Lisa Gay Hall, and I'm a mom. I sat back there and I thought about, what could I say to you to try to help convince you to protect the earth for my children? And I thought about my son, and there's a book that I used to read to him. And I'm going to read a little bit of it right now to you, and you can take from it what you will, but I think it's really relevant. It's called "The Lorax." "Mister," he said with a sawdusty sneeze, "I am the Lorax. I speak for the trees. I speak for the trees, for the trees have no tongues. And I'm asking you, sir, at the top of my lungs," he was very upset as he shouted and puffed, "what's that thing you've made out of my truffula tub?" "Oh, Lorax," I said, "there's no cause for alarm. I chopped just one tree. I am doing no harm. I'm being quite useful. This thing is a thneed, a thneed, is a find something that all people need. It's a shirt, it's a sock, it's a glove, it's a hat, but it has other uses. Yes, far beyond that. You can use it for carpets, for pillows, for sheets or curtains, or covers for bicycle seats." The Lorax said, "Sir, you are crazy with greed. There is no one on earth who would buy that fool's thneed." But the very next minute, I proved he was wrong. For just that, that minute, a chap came along, and he thought that the thneed I had knitted was great. He happily bought it for $3.98. I laughed at the Lorax, "You poor stupid guy. You never can tell what some people will buy." "I repeat," cried the Lorax, "I speak for the trees." "I'm busy," I told him, "shut up, baby, please." I reached across the room, and in no time at all, built a radio phone. I put in a quick call. I called on my brothers and uncles and aunts. I said, "Listen here, here's a wonderful chance for the whole Winsler family to get mighty rich. Get over there fast, take the road to North Mitch. Turn left at Weehawken, sharp right at South Stitch, and in no time at all, in the factory I built, the whole Winsler family was working full-tilt. We were all knitting th needs, just as busy as bees, to the sound of the chopping of truffula trees." Then, oh baby, oh, how my business did grow. Now chopping one tree at a time was too slow. So I quickly invented my Super Axe Hacker, which whacked off four truffula trees in one smacker. We were making th needs four times as fast as before, and that Lorax, he didn't show up anymore. But the next week, he knocked at my new office door. He snapped, "I'm the Lorax who speaks for the trees. Would you seem to be chopping as fast as you please?" I'm going to skip to the end of this story. You know it, because you probably read it to your own kids. Bottom line is that the Lorax said nothing, just gave me a glance. He gave me a very sad, sad, backward glance, and he lifted himself by the seat of his pants. And I'll never forget that grim look on his face when he heisted himself and took leave of that place, threw a hole in the smog without leaving a trace. All the Lorax left here in this mess was a smile of hollow rocks with one word: unless.
Who is fir-, am I first? Clark? Terrence Clark. Okay. Yes, good evening, and thank you for having this hearing this evening. I am a physician, retired, and I'm the chairperson of the Western North Carolina Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. One of the guidelines we live by, work by with that group is prevention is the cure. We don't, with this situation, we do not want to increase emergency room care and hospital care when it can be simply managed and improved by having a level that is set by the EPA. The sulfur dioxide has been proven scientifically to adversely affect human health and contributes to acid rain. It can adversely affect asthma and chronic pulmonary disease. The EPA estimates that if their guideline, their safe level, was implemented, that by 2020, there would be somewhere in the range of 4,000 to 12,000 less premature deaths per year. Additionally, there'd be greater than 3 million fewer cases of worsened asthma per year. I want to shift to something that hasn't been mentioned. We've mentioned money and how much, how many billions Duke makes. Something we haven't mentioned is, for example, would you today buy a house under the plume we saw in the newspaper? Would you buy it at full market value today if those limits aren't changed? I think this is going to hurt people financially in addition to health-wise, that it'd be scary for people to be purchasing a house that lives under that plume that was demonstrated in the newspaper. So I ask you to think of that when you're weighing the issues of setting a level that is safe for health. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'd like to start just by saying, the only good coal is the coal that's under the ground. To not acknowledge the fact that coal is an arcane fuel source is akin to not acknowledging that the number-one contributor to climate change is big animal agriculture. My name is Tate McQueen, and I'm a teacher here, and I consider this to be a sacred place here at Irwin High School. I live in South Asheville, in the shadow of that smokestack. And there are three, not two, but three NPL sites, National Priority List sites, in Buncombe County. Some statistics that might bear use here, 50% of the people in Buncombe County derive their water from the ground, and 100% derive their air from the air. Now, when we are looking at this, I want to tell you that at first review, I, as a teacher, must give your first draft an F. However, like the teachers that I work with and the students that I've taught, we are willing to allow you to make corrections. And if you will revise your standards to the appropriate levels, then I think we can all agree to give you an A. What we are talking about here is profit over people, the corporate citizen united over the inhabiting human citizens, the men, the women, the children, and the wildlife in our environment. I often ask my friends at EPA who have done nothing to clean up any of those sites, I always ask them, would you be willing to lose your job if it meant doing the right thing? I am willing to lose my job every day that I come into this building if it means doing the right thing. And every day that you come into your building, you see the school buses coming to this school, and you know that the decisions that you're making have lasting consequences. And all we are asking you to do is do the right thing. Instead of using someone else's guidance, use your own, use your moral judgment, and know that we have the moral high ground here. But to look the other way, in the interest of profit over people, then we get back to that place where we don't need to be. And I'll just close by saying this, this is a time for heroes. This is a time for heroes, and you can be those heroes. I think we've had enough of worrying about the bottom-line zeros. So thank you for your time.
I'm Gail Solomon. I live in Weaverville, and I'm a proud member of the Sierra Club. I'm here tonight because I wanted to quote a very wise person who one time said, "Stupidity is doing the same thing over and over and over and expecting a different result." Do you really think that by maintaining the status quo and rubber-stamping the same standard that has failed in the past, that you will magically get things better? I don't think so, and I don't think the rest of the people in this room thinks so either. You are lucky. First of all, I commend you for your public service. It is hard. It is thankless. But you are lucky, because you are in a position right now, right here, at this time, to make a lasting difference for your community, for your families, for our friends, for our relatives, for the children, and the yet unborn children. You can make that decision. You have the power, it's been documented. You have the authority. What you need is the will to do it. Do it! You have the power. Make that difference. Make a mark. Please, I'm not going to cite all the numbers, you've heard them. I'm probably one of the last people between you and dinner, and you're probably blurry-eyed by now. So I just implore you, please, take your power and use it for good. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Holt, and I'm a proud member of the Green Grannies. We sing for the climate, and we also sing to call out pollution, which we know is not necessary. Now, I have a background of having been a respiratory therapist for a good number of years, and what I saw was people coming into emergency rooms with asthma, with chronic lung disease. I saw the young, and I saw the frail elderly being really badly impacted by bad air days. And we don't need to do that. I got tired of being in the hospital, taking care of people with preventable illnesses. That's why I went to public health school, so I could figure out, as they used to say, "Well, if you see that a lot of people, a lot of children are getting dropped into a river, wouldn't you go upstream to find out who's pushing them in?" And yes, I wanted to go upstream to get to the root of the problem, and boy, oh, boy, it's so apparent. We have air pollution, we have water pollution, we have so many forms of degradation of our beautiful, precious environment, and it's all because of profit. These extractive kinds of industries, like coal-fired power plants, which rely on mountaintop removal mining, such a desecration, and there's no reason. I really, I really think that if we had strong enough standards that truly protected people instead of externalizing the costs of private industry into the health costs of individuals in the community, I think that if we truly put this standard that we've talked about tonight into effect, then it would become more, it would become a better idea, a better business idea, to put up wind power plants, which would not pollute our air. So thank you very much for your attention.
My name is Hal Hobstrom, and I moved here 18 years ago when my wife and I, when I retired. My wife is not with me this evening, not because she doesn't support what we're doing here, but because she's wrestling with an attack yet again of asthma. here, but because she's wrestling with an attack yet again of asthma. If I had the power, I would require all of the managers of Duke Energy to sit and watch the woman I love struggle once again to survive an asthma attack.
I do believe that the people here are losing faith in our government to do their job that they're paid to do, to protect us. If your hands are tied, and I have a feeling they may be, I implore you to find a solution and find a way. Be creative, be the one that say you did, not the one that says you didn't. At least try. We need you to restore faith in our government and do your job, and there are ways to do that. I'm the one who's handing out this flyer regarding how to help stop climate change or help to prevent it. There are real solutions out there, and we're trying to come up with those solutions through the Citizens Climate Lobby, one of which is called a carbon fee and dividend. It's very similar to what they did in Alaska and also in Germany. In Germany, as you know, they have one of the most aggressive energy renewable policies in the world. They had some problems apparently, but they've done a pretty good job overall. And I'm just going to give you a quote from the Bloomberg Review. Because of renewable energy subsidized production cost, wholesale electricity prices have dropped 60% since 2008. They had subsidized the renewable energies. That has made it unprofitable for traditional utilities to operate natural gas-burning power plants. And that, to me, is very telling. I mean, if you can subsidize, or in, in this case, the carbon fee and dividend, which is a different option, but in effect is charging a fee for carbon-based fuels to be emitted, and then returning that profit that is made from that fee back to the consumer, to the citizens, to then take their money and use their money wisely to reinvest in renewable energies. That is a solution. In all of our hearing today, I've heard lots of people talk about, please do something, please do something. I think we've got to all start coming up with solutions. So I'm offering you one way that you should start looking into, so that we can all be creative in helping to fix this problem. Thank you.
My name is Darlene Zarmy. I live in the Oakley neighborhood of Asheville. I'm here today as a concerned young person who believes that my voice and the voices of all those who have spoken tonight will be heard. So thank you for letting us speak and for, and for your work. Amidst the controversies that have surrounded Duke in North Carolina, folks have lost faith in the company's commitment to environmental and public health, and for good reason. So we look to you, an agency in place to protect us, to place the hard standards it will take to keep us safe. From reading about behind closed doors negotiations that were leaked via email, to being members of the 87 families that were told by Deaner just last week not to drink or cook with their well water due to toxic heavy metal contents that fail to meet groundwater standards, citizens are forced to swallow Duke's negligence. It's reality. Thanks to independent studies conducted by outside entities, we know that our mountain air now contains up to 3.5 times the amount of sulfur dioxide that the EPA deems to be safe. We know that safe limits are, were exceeded consistently every one to four days since 2010. When would Duke have taken the initiative to figure this out or inform us? These are stories that we have heard before but truly could never have to hear again. In fact, Duke's core values outline a philosophy that could theoretically take us there. Their first three values are as follows. One, safety. We put safety first in all we do. Two, caring. We look out for each other. We strive to make the environment and communities around us a better place to live. Three, integrity. We do the right thing. We honor our commitments. We admit when we are wrong. This all sounds good on paper, but it's clear that Duke's track record does not parallel their values. Thus, I ask you all to use your authority to protect us. Make sure that North Carolinians are safe by setting a standard of .029 pounds per BTU, and please do it as soon as possible. Even though all of us in this room pay Duke to provide our energy, it's clear that regulation is the only means by which Duke will protect citizens over profit. They will listen if you make them. Please require Duke to show the respect that we deserve and set the standards that science says are safe. Thank you.
I'm an Asheville resident and the Western North Carolina Sierra Club treasurer. As the second to last to speak this evening, this is a good opportunity to summarize what has been said here tonight. And I want to reiterate our appreciation for the work you do and for holding this hearing. I wish to summarize four points to the agency. One, is there a health-based evidence regarding unsafe SO2 emission levels? Yes. The EPA has set an air quality standard for sulfur dioxide. Two, is there sufficient evidence that Duke Energy's coal plant emissions cause an unsafe SO2 pollution downwind of the plant? Yes. Unsafe downwind pollution occurs about one out of every three to four days. Three, does the agency have the authority to impose a numeric emission limit more stringent than the current limit? Yes. The agency's own rules require more stringent regulations, if necessary, to prevent the violation of air quality standards. Four, does Duke Energy have the ability to meet a revised limit? Yes. Duke has the equipment installed to meet more stringent emission limits. Therefore, rather than renewing a permit that includes a numeric emission limit that is 80 times higher than the limit necessary to protect against unsafe pollution levels in downwind communities, I respectfully request that the agency revise Duke's air quality permit renewal. That was three minutes? That was not, that was not, that was not three minutes.
I'm not gonna try to go through the numbers and figures that I have a hard time remembering anyway. What I am, what I do want to do is tell you what's happened to us. We live in Arden, downwind of the power plant, across the intersection from Blue, from Blue Ridge Plating. When my, and my 17-year-old was 16 months when we moved here, so we've been in the area for a while. When he was, when he was small, we spent a lot of nights in the ER with asthma and creep attacks. Notice something really strange, that all of a sudden, those ER visits stopped. And when we looked back on it, they stopped when those scrubbers were put in place. So I know for a fact, as a mother, the scrubbers work. Why are they not being used? Why are they only being used one out of four days? And at the same time that he was having all these asthma and creep attacks and ended up in the ER, every morning that the emissions had been being put out, our white car was gray the next morning. Every time. The scrubbers work. We know that. Why are they not being used? After that, his health improved tremendously. Like I said, the ER visits just totally stopped, and there was hardly any more problem with that. About seventh grade, he started, Jacob started having all these chemical reaction problems to the chemical odors and things. And they affected his health. They affected things like skin reactions, and difficulty walking, and severe pain in multiple different areas, headaches. And recently, we thought they were coming from Blue Ridge Plating, which, yes, they are. But we also realized recently that they started about the time that the scrubbers were cut back. The scrubbers work. Why are they not being used? Now, in order to protect himself as much as he can, he's wearing a mask when he, when he feels like he's being exposed to these areas. I have one, one last question. As you make these decisions, think about the fact that if this was your child, would you make the same decision that you're making now?
Mr. Swash, could you just cut my data real quick, please? As he's coming back down, we, it's not us, but we have to be out of here before it's nine o'clock. So I'm gonna give you your minute, but what I want to make the announcement is, when I call the last group, we're gonna have to reduce the time to two minutes. So Mr. Wash was in the group that is allowed three minutes. But the group, after Mr. Wash, we have 10 more people to go. I apologize for the miscommunication between Mr. Swash and myself.
I appreciate that. With the data available to the agency and the heartfelt and informed comments, of all the speakers who went before me, it would be inappropriate for the agency to wait until state attainment plans are prepared sometime in mid-2022. There is ample precedent for the agency to require more stringent permit. Other counties in North Carolina have numeric limits that are more stringent than those proposed for Asheville. Why not here? Your agency is the one we depend on to make Duke do the right thing. We hope when you look back on your service with this agency, I hope you will say to your children, we did the right thing. It was our finest hour. Thank you.
I apologize for the miscommunication. These next folks, though, will follow, we're reducing the time to two minutes. Jacob Garrison, Emma Greenbaum, and Joyce Metameyer, Jacob Box, and Sparrow Wood. I apologize, I can't tell if it's over.
As, as many of us have said, the regulations in place now by the Air Quality Board do not meet the EPA requirements, which means they do not, they are breaking federal law, which means that not only, in my, which means that in my opinion, not only is Duke breaking federal law, the Air Quality Board is breaking federal law by not, by issuing a permit that does not meet federal law. And also, the way I said, people can move away from water pollution, people can move away from soil pollution without much difficulty. It's much harder to move away from air pollution, whatever your financial status. So why is, as I, as I say, as many of us have said, why are, the scrubbers work? Why are they not being used to their fullest extent?
Hi, members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Emma Greenbaum. I am the organizing representative for North Carolina Beyond Coal, but I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. And the reasons I'm speaking tonight, first is that I suffered from asthma as a child. So I know what it feels like to not know if you're going to catch your next breath, and it is a feeling that you never forget. And what Duke is saying, what Duke Energy is saying, what they've said in the papers, is that yes, they might be burning higher sulfur content coal, and then it might be saving their customers money. And I come from an economics background, but what Duke Energy is saying with this is that it is worth it for them to save on their operating costs. It's worth it for them to potentially cause asthma attacks with the money that they'll save. And if that is true, if it's worth it, if you have decided that it is worth it, I would want them to be very specific about what those numbers are. And so far, we have not seen any evidence that this is saving customers money. We see that all across the board. The second thing that I wanted to bring up, that I think I'm uniquely positioned to speak to you on, is that I'm one of the folks who made sure that people knew about the hearing tonight. And we had a huge outpouring of support from the community about cleaner air for our area. And what I want to tell you is that we would love to have your back when you do the right thing. I just wrote a piece that was out in the Asheville Blade, talking about my experience with asthma, talking about my experience with what's happening. And I would love for the next thing that I write to be about how you did the right thing, how the Western North Carolina Air Quality Agency decided to side with communities for healthy air. So thank you for your time, and I truly hope and believe that you guys can make the right decision.
Hello. My name's Sparrow Wood. I really don't have a whole lot to say. I'm really proud to be a part of, a lot of good neighbors here have done a lot of good homework, and I, I was alerted by some neighbors that, looking at some models, I live Butler Mountain, kind of overlooking, I can see the smokestack from, from our window looking west. There's some areas pretty close to us that have, oh, the limit, I think they say the safe limit's 196 micrograms per cubic meter, and there's places really close to us that go up to 500 micrograms per cubic meter. It's, I just find it, it, I just don't trust big corporations and big, making profits by cutting corners and putting the human factor in danger. And I, I don't see how you could listen to the room here and do anything but make the right adjustments for the safety of the community. Thanks.
David Reed, Jim Barton, Steve, is it Colin or Colton? Colin?
My name is David Reed. I am, lived in East Buncombe County for 31 years now. And so at this point in the evening, the strength of my comments lie, not in their novelty, but in their emphasis. As you've heard from many people tonight, there's great disappointment, and the draft permit was so status quo and weak. And it's just hard to believe that that's the best we can do. Also heard concern that you may not have the authority to set a stricter permit, and I happen to think that's not the case, as many people here tonight think that's not the case. So I want to thank So I want to thank you for your attentiveness tonight, especially as it gets this late into evening, and to add my emphasis that we would like you to set that permit that meets the national standards that have been set for health, as have been repeated so many times tonight. And I do want to read those numbers to you and repeat them because I think they're important. So again, those standards are 61.7 pounds per hour for each coal-burning unit, equating to a plant-wide average for SO2 emission of a .029 pounds per million BTUs. I hope when we see the new permit come out that it will contain those numbers. As a longtime resident here, I have mixed feelings about all the top 10 list that this area makes on an annual basis. However, I know for a fact, and I'm not, don't have mixed feelings about not wanting to see this area make the top 10 list for the highest sulfur dioxide emissions.
My name is Jim Barton, and I'd like to add my voice to the bulk of the people who spoke tonight and encourage you to have the most stringent standards possible. Ideally, I would like to see Lake Julian shut down and replaced by Green Power. Thank you.[1437.32][1437.32][applause]
Steve Colton. Hannah Borababy. And Sylvie Horvath.
I was not planning to speak, but I couldn't not.
What's your name?
My name is Sylvie Horvath, and I was not planning to speak, but I couldn't not speak here tonight. I represent those people in our 60s and 70s who are walking off the stage of life with concern about those who will follow us on the stage of life. In our lifetime, we have seen people who had no power, the average person suddenly have power to make change and lose that power again, and we're seeing it now again. Studies have shown that the farther you are from someone, the less you care. In other words, you care more for your family members and those immediately around you than those who might be across the ocean. Duke Energy, as far as we're concerned, we're across the ocean from them. I'm also across the ocean from you. I no longer feel across the ocean from many of the people I've heard here tonight. And I am asking you to look at me as a human being, one of your species, to look at the people here as human beings, as your species, and understand in this time, when money speaks so loudly, we are counting on you to protect us.
Hello. I'm Hannah Borababy. I am here representing the fairies, mermaids, and other spirits of these, the most ancient mountains on the planet. Let's speak candidly for a moment, shall we? We all know that major corporations like Duke Energy, which is simply one of many, show blatant disregard for the health and well-being of the earth and all those living herein. To be honest, I am less concerned about the toxic emissions spewing from the energy plant than I am about the glazed-over and disconnected expressions that have lined your faces tonight as a room full of people bare their souls to you, asking you to do the right things. Where is the fire in your belly? You are the voices for this entire room and for a community of people who don't even realize that there's a problem, let alone that there is a simple solution. You are the solution. I don't know what forces you are up against. I can only begin to guess. But you are members of this community as well. You breathe the same air that we do. You walk the same sacred grounds that we do, and you benefit from being a part of this community. Yes. Adopt the EPA's standards. That's the least that you can do. And don't stop there. Let's harness the spirit of the land and make the move towards communion with the elements and our neighbors by switching to sustainable energy alternatives, because we all know there is no safe limit to sulfur dioxide emissions. Open your ears, your eyes, and your hearts, and for the sake of us all, use your power in the interest of good. Let your actions, the representatives of the Air Quality Agency, bring some lightness to your heart, some sparkle to your smile, and some purpose to your step upon this earth. We have all sat through the speeches tonight. Thank you for your attention and for your energy tonight, and please, don't let this be a waste of my time, your time, or anyone else's time.[1720.82][1720.82][applause]
I'd like to thank each of you and every one of you for your attendance this evening and for your interest. I'll take this time to remind you again that the written comments can be accepted until 5:00 p.m. on April 30, 2015. At that time, the comment, at that time, the comment time will be expired and the record will be closed. Based on information received during tonight's hearing and the comment period ending on April 30, 2015, I'll make a recommendation, I'll make a recommendation to the Air Quality Board for their consideration-making and final decision on whether to issue or deny the issuance of the proposed air permit. I thank you again for your cooperation, attendance, and interest this closing hearing. This is your last.[1770.51][1770.51][applause][1771.51][1771.51][end of transcript][1772.51][1772.51][end of transcript][1773.51][1773.51][end of transcript][1774.51][1774.51][end of transcript][1775.51][1775.51][end of transcript][1776.51][1776.51][end of transcript][1777.51][1777.51][end of transcript][1778.51][1778.51][end of transcript][1779.51][1779.51][end of transcript][1780.51][1780.51][end of transcript][1781.51][1781.51][end of transcript][1782.51][1782.51][end of transcript][1783.51][1783.51][end of transcript][1784.51][1784.51][end of transcript][1785.51][1785.51][end of transcript][1786.51][1786.51][end of transcript][1787.51][1787.51][end of transcript][1788.51][1788.51][end of transcript][1789.51][1789.51][end of transcript][1790.51][1790.51][end of transcript][1791.51][1791.51][end of transcript][1792.51][1792.51][end of transcript][1793.51][1793.51][end of transcript][1794.51][1794.51][end of transcript][1795.51][1795.51][end of transcript][1796.51][1796.51][end of transcript][1797.51][1797.51][end of transcript][1798.51][1798.51][end of transcript][1799.51][1799.51][end of transcript]